Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, January 22nd, Meeting of the Board of Commissioners. This evening, we have Pastor Glenn McCraney here for the invocation. And after Pastor gets done with invocation, I'd like to invite Boy Scout Troop 127 to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thanks, sir.
Let us pray. O God, Father of Abraham and Jacob, as we gather tonight, we pray for your divine presence and healing. As a nation and your people, we are gathered together, and we are in need of your presence and healing due to the divisions which have become so strong. These divisions now separate us as a nation, a nation which was conceived in freedom. Words of strife has become insult to replace civility. Tonight, as we assemble, may we hear once again those famous words by a preacher, "I have a dream." Let those words echo in our minds and hearts. May we have a dream, a dream with a prayer concerning our present events. A dream of what we can be, a dream of what our country can become, a dream that our commissioners will always seek a greater future for our county, a dream the people of Currituck will catch a vision of others as brothers and sisters in the Lord. As others have dreams, may I dream, give hope here in the spite that is before us. May this become conditions where we may sell and glorify your name. A dream, a purpose of service to others, a dream of the mighty works that we are able to accomplish in your name, a dream that is in our hearts until we behold the coming of your glory. And all God's people say, "Amen."
All right. We'll have the troop back there. Come on up, guys. All right.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Did you guys need to say anything this evening? No? Did you guys like to introduce yourselves? Gentlemen, come up and introduce yourselves. How about, let's know who you are.
Somebody step right over to the mic way there. Go right to the mic way there. Give us your name and truth.
My name's Dylan Seemster, and I'm from Troop 127.
Thank you.
My name's Aiden Waldrop, and I'm from Troop 127.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Greenwell, and I'm from Troop 127.
My name's Elijah Ortega, and I'm from Troop 127.
My name is Colin Fatic, and I'm from Troop 127.
My name is Andrew Sernowski, and I'm from Troop 127.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Next, we have a ceremony or swearing-in of our newest Commissioner, Mrs. Selena Jarvis. I'd like you to come back out front, and Mr. Ray Matuska will administer.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Dan Scanlon and the Board of Commissioners for inviting me out to do this. It's always an honor and a privilege to administer the oaths of office, and I greatly appreciate that. If you want to come over here, if you'd like to introduce your...
This is my husband, Steve Jarvis.
And I'd like to note that Steve is not really recently, but he's a recently retired state employee. He was a sergeant with North Carolina Wildlife, and thank you for your service. If you want to take the Bible. Okay? If you'll face me, please. All right. Do you, Selena Jarvis, solemnly swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States, and that you'll be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you'll endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you further solemnly swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of your office as a member of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to the best of your knowledge, skill, and ability, and according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item of approval of the agenda, Mr. Paint.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one change to our agenda tonight. Under new business, I would like to take off item number B if we could.
Okay. Thank you. Motion for approval, please.
Please do, please.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Take none, motion passes. All right. Thank you. Do we not have anyone signed up for public comment? I didn't get the sheets. We are all out of whack tonight, folks. Prior to the work session, we had a meeting with Chandler Thanks to do a marketing study and look at our tourism efforts, and so it kind of threw us off. We had to rush through that and get that done, but it was all good. Oh, well, noted for public comment. Okay, then, moving on. Commission reports. I'll start off this evening. I'm sure everyone noticed that they got a focus on Currituck here recently. I hope you did. I hope everyone took the time to read that. I asked the county manager to change a section or add a section in that to kind of address some of the issues that we hear as the Board of Commissioners all the time. So we've added a new section, so if you haven't read it yet, please take a moment to read that magazine that we put out. Going forward, we're going to kind of address some issues that we hear routinely as the Board of Commissioners to help educate people, understand why we have to make some of the decisions that we make. And hopefully, that'll just make life a little bit easier for everyone. And Corolla, my district, the Corolla Greenway, the section in Corolla Light, from Corolla Light south to Monterey, is getting closer. We're looking at bids now, and we'll start construction on that hopefully sometime in the very near future, and get that started before the tour season gets here and close yet another gap in the Greenway over there. Someone pinged me about the historic boat building. That is moving along nicely, and we hope to start construction of that this summer sometime. Is that correct, Dan?
Yes, correct.
Yep. And so that's for our boat folks that have put a lot of time and effort into that in preserving our history and heritage. They can look forward to a long overdue project starting finally coming to fruition. And for the folks in Corova, the four-by-four land swap is a little bit closer to reality. It's been supposed to be close to done. When I came on the board two years ago, and if we ever open up the federal government again, we might actually get that done. So I'm assuming it's sitting on a desk with a bunch of stuff on top of it right now, but that is closer to a reality and helps us keep our own destiny alive up there without having to worry about what the state government may or may not do with respect to crossing their lands. So that's all my news from my area. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Paint.
Well, tonight, I have nothing to bring.
Ms. Kitty Etheridge.
Yes, sir. Last month, I had the opportunity to attend the Legislative Goals Conference. Most of North Carolina's 100 counties were represented, and the purpose of this conference is to make the presentation to the General Assembly what county government would like to see passed. The top five goals and their rankings are: Number one, seek legislation, funding, and other efforts to expand digital infrastructure broadband capability to the underserved, which would greatly help Currituck County. Number two, seek additional revenue sources, including a statewide bond and lottery proceeds to address public school and community college capital challenge. Three, support efforts to preserve and expand the existing local revenue basis of county. Oppose efforts to divert to state fees or taxes currently allocated to counties or to erode existing county revenue streams. Excuse me. Number four, support provisions of state resources to ensure county's ability to provide essential public health, behavioral health, and social service, including incarcerated persons, and address substance abuse. And number five, seek legislature to repeal the statutory authority under North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(411) that allows local school boards to file suit against the County Board of Commissioners over appropriation of the local Board of Education Capital Outlay Fund. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Beaumont.
Nothing this evening.
All right. Mr. McCord.
I have a couple things. I'd like to recognize, one thing, we get a lot of complaints. I get a lot of phone calls and emails referenced to trash on the side roads, the main roads. I know in this month alone, I believe, the inmates from the jail compliments of our sheriff and Sergeant Lewis, who oversees that, from the jail. I think they picked up over 100 bags of trash. There's probably another 1,000 left out there, unfortunately. And they did a cleanup on Tulsa Creek Road. One thing that I'd like to mention, and I had the privilege to take part in this, was for the wounded warriors. In action, the thing that Beach Realty and Brooke Sparks did on the send-off of the veterans, it's really cool, and it's gotten bigger and bigger every year. This is the eighth year. The support from the local businesses, let me think, the local businesses as well as, and I'm not going to name them all because I'll forget somebody, fire and EMS if anybody was out on Sunday, January 13th, when you rode through before you got to Sligo. Crawford had the flag draped across 168. I mean, it was pretty cool. And like I said, Brooke Sparks, she does a lot involved in that, and I mean, it's a really cool thing that we do here in the county, recognizing our veterans. So that's it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Etheridge.
Nothing other than just to say thank you to everyone for your prayers and concerns while I've had a little health crisis. I'm on the mend, and I missed most of the first part of January, but I'm back in the saddle now and ready to get to work for the citizens of Currituck.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Jarvis.
I don't have anything. I just want to thank everybody for this opportunity and look forward to serving Currituck County.
We look forward to working with you. All right. Administrative reports. Ms. Tamara Kugler.
Well, before I launch into this, I'd like to thank you all for having me here tonight and giving me an opportunity to address you. I have a little PowerPoint presentation. So as we approach another season of promotional marketing, in this case, the 2020 season, so we're already one year ahead, I wanted to give you insight into how we make advertising decisions. Each fiscal year, the majority of our marketing decisions rely on past performance and metrics to make sure that we are getting the best return on our investment. Our tried and true advertisers are Google Ads, Southern Living, and Digital Display Ads, just to name a few. The aim of marketing is twofold, to create brand awareness and to convince a potential visitor to actually come to the Currituck Outer Banks. Here are some of the marketing purchasing factors that we look at. One, is it appropriate for our demographics? Does it reach our target markets? Is it cost-effective? What is the audience size or distribution of that particular marketing plan? All of these factors are important. Sometimes in marketing, you try to see, you try to do something new just to see if it works. It might only fit some of your criteria, but you see a potential for success, and you take a chance. We use a small portion of our overall budget every year for new initiatives that we feel have potential to raise brand awareness and put us ahead of the curve compared to some of our competitors. Here are some of the new initiatives that we are currently working on. These are kind of cool. AWOL, this stands for air, water, or land. This is a brand-new streaming Amazon Prime series that is geared towards millennials and their travel habits. So we're working on that currently. Also, longer-format TV series. This is something that's self-produced. We'll be producing it. It's a long-format promotion piece that would be run through what we call over-the-top or OTT networks in various markets. So think, anybody have Roku? It's like Roku, so we can actually produce, Roku will show our product. This is similar to on-demand content that you can currently find with other cable providers. Now, sporting event advertising is a new marketing venture for us, so this is one of those new initiatives that we decided to try this year. Even though the $50,000 spend is labeled as a sponsorship, this was a purchased advertising program for Currituck Outer Banks. So this is advertising. The decision to use a tournament as a marketing medium was to create brand awareness in a way that we have not ventured before. We have never done any kind of marketing in a sports arena. Several factors played into our decision. For example, we looked at additional demographics of our basketball fans. So this is from Scarborough USA Plus Research for men's NCAA basketball demographics. Men's college basketball attracts an affluent and well-educated audience, affluent being a key word. The age range is 66% are above the age of 35. Our market, our demographics are 35 to 64, mostly women. Homeownership, 73% own their own homes. That is an indicator to us that these particular people have probably a little bit more disposable income because they own their homes, hopefully, they've paid it off, so we're looking at that. Education, 66% have a college education. And the household income, 16% have a household income of $100,000 to $150,000. 13% have a household income of $150,000 or higher. So when you put those two figures together, you've got about 29% are within our demographic when we look at household income. So we're looking at online content, and the reason for this is with over 65% of travelers now using mobile devices to research and book travel destinations. We wanted to reach potential travelers to Currituck Outer Banks via online content provided by the advertiser to create brand awareness and to get them to land on our website. Landing on our website is very, very important. So as you can see, this tournament fits several of our criteria, not all, but some, so we use that when examining the possible effectiveness of this kind of campaign. All of the teams, with the exception of Arkansas, which we looked at as a test market, we decided, okay, well, we've got something that's not quite in the mix, so let's just see how we perform there. All of them were in our feeder markets. North Carolina is our biggest feeder market, and you heard that with Chandler Thanks' presentation, and two of the teams are from North Carolina. Illinois is an emerging feeder market for us. We're getting more and more travelers from Illinois. Consequently, we have been doing a travel show there every year. In fact, our team just got back from Chicago last week. The tournament was also in Asheville, North Carolina, and locally would reach the greater metro area of Asheville, particularly with the outside marquee. Actually, we're on the outside marquee in a triple loop for two months, I think, might have been a little over two months, at the arena. And in addition, we also got in front of tourists that were in Asheville. So they were in Asheville, not during our season, but in fall season, so hopefully, maybe we converted some of those visitors to Asheville to come to our market in the summer. So here's a little bit of our website statistics. After the tournament, we looked at the website statistics for the week before the tournament and the week after, and compared it to the same timeframe in 2017. This timeframe was November 18th through November 30th for both 2018 and 2017. In order to make sure that we didn't have any advertising programs or other outside influences that could have a direct effect on the numbers, we looked at the Thanksgiving holiday dates to see if they fell within the same range, and you can see that they were one day apart. So we sort of ruled that out as possibly having any kind of effect. Then we looked at any of our paid advertising that we were doing to see if that could possibly affect the statistics. We determined that neither the holiday nor online spending would have any measurable effects on the analytics. And as you can see, 2016, we had a big spend of almost $6,000, but the last two years, it's been around 25. There's less than $100 between the 2,000 spend and the 2018 spend. So we kind of ruled that out. So factoring out any possible advertising that could affect the statistics, other than the tournament advertising, we looked to see if digital advertising had an effect on our website statistics. We were very pleased with the outcome. We were surprised, in fact, particularly in the conversion statistics. Now, the conversion statistics are very important to us because conversions are very highly-qualified potential visitors because they've taken the time when considering vacation plans to either download a guide or request a guide. So here's our overall web stats. During that timeframe, the users increased by almost 25%. So that's just users. That could be a new, that could be a user that's been there before. That's generally how we look at that analytics. So that was an increase of almost 25%. New users, people who haven't been to our website before, increased again, almost 25%. And page views, this is kind of an important indicator for us because you land on our website page, you're on the homepage, but you actually take the time to look at other pages to find more information. So that was an increase of 23%. Now, this is where we were surprised somewhat, the conversion actions. So there was an increase of 152% of people who downloaded our digital guide. That shows a lot of intent, so we were really happy with that. We didn't quite understand this one. We'll take it. We didn't quite understand it, but the digital wedding guide, there was an increase of 81%. So I guess maybe people who are watching that tournament might thought, oh, what a great place to get married. We're not quite sure, but we like it. And then there was an increase of 213% in the shopping and dining guides. So you can see, these conversions are very, very high. And a request for a physical guide, that means they go on, they actually fill things out, they give us their email address and their address, so we can actually track those. That was an increase of 212%. Then we looked at website visits by geography. We were a little disappointed in Charlotte Metro. Not really much of a change, 0.36%, not that great. But look at Wilmington. Wilmington had an increase of 346% over the year before. That to us was very, Wilmington had a team there. Asheville, North Carolina, we saw an increase of 73% over the year before. Arkansas, as our test market, we saw an increase of 16%. So we were reaching some people in Arkansas, that was great. And Illinois, we saw an increase of 10%. Now, the next slide that you see is impression tracking. Another way we can measure digital advertising campaigns for effectiveness is through digital impressions. Impression tracking is a common metric for measuring the performance of most online types of marketing campaigns. So an impression is when your ad comes up on a user's screen. So that's an opportunity for the user to see it. Impressions are not action-based. I mean, we'd like for them to click on it, but basically, we want to try to get our name out. That's brand awareness. So impressions are not action-based, and are merely defined by a user potentially seeing the advertisement, making cost-per-thousand campaigns, we call those CPMs, ideal for businesses' intent on spreading brand awareness. So that's one aspect of it. Digital marketing has made impression tracking significantly more quantitative than offline advertising because we can track it, we can measure it, we can see what's happening. For example, a billboard owner really has no concrete way of estimating the number of impressions his platform grants advertisers. We have a bit of a handle on how many people might be seeing our billboards down 158 because we can, we can kind of estimate how many visitors are going down the highway during the summer based on other numbers. So we have a little bit of a handle on it, but we don't have anything as concrete. So impression-based online campaigns, on the other hand, as opposed to billboards, can measure impressions concretely and are generally sold in terms of cost per thousand. So you pay a certain amount of money for each impression. So here's an impression perspective, based on what we did last year, or what we did in 2018, and what happened with the tournament. We spent $225,000 in Google Ads in 2018 that generated, for us, 4.3 million impressions. This is not clicks, but strictly how many times our ad appeared in front of somebody. Now, when we looked at the tournament, we had a $50,000 spend, which generated over 34 million impressions. Just to kind of give you a little bit of perspective. Another way we can measure digital advertising campaigns for effectiveness is through digital impressions. Impression tracking is a common metric, as we said, for measuring the performance. So now, I'm just going to go through some of our sources for our tournament impressions. Explore Asheville was very, very good to us. So that's a sister DMO or destination marketing organization, so they were great to us. So you can see what they did for us, and I won't go read through all of them, but I am going to add these up at the end. So we were on their calendar, we were on their sports blog, we got Twitter posts, they even dedicated a microsite to promote the hotel rates, and they sent out a dedicated email to the lodging partners. Now, the lodging partners are also able to tell their guests through concierge services what's going on in Nashville at the time. Here's what our advertiser generated for us, and this is in social media. So almost, almost 6 million impressions on social media, and that includes Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube. And all of these posts are well-followed accounts, and the individual accounts are below. Ken Palmeroy, I know you can't really see what's going on there, but he's a, he's a sports blogger. Matt Paxton has a big following. He's on Hoarders. He was touting us, so all of his followers got to see it. And also, you can see where he, Matt Paxton, on his, on his blog, you can see that, or you can't see that.
Kind of see it.
It's a little hard to see. We were also promoted on the team website. So here you see the Panthers. So we have our Battle in the Brewage, and notice it says, "Visit CurrituckOBX.com/Battle in the Blue Ridge." It had our logo on it and then the event logo, which says, "Visit CurrituckOBX.com/Battle in the Blue Ridge." Now, interestingly, what the advertiser also did for us on the Battle in the Blue Ridge website itself was not only did we have a Currituck Outer Banks destination video on there, we were also able to get an economic development video on there. So we were able to kind of double-purpose that, which was really great. So the total impressions for that was 1.3 million. Now, this is probably the biggest one. This is the ESPN impact. So the total impressions from ESPN... So the total impressions from ESPN was almost 26 million. Now, this will remain on ESPN indefinitely. And you can't see it, but you see that little brown arrow? That is pointing to, visit currituckobx.com Battle in the Blue Ridge. Now, what was interesting about that is a lot of the times, they don't put the tournament names on this, but we were able to get the tournament name on there and the link to our website. So that was very, very important. And this is going to stay up there for a while. So we were really pleased with that. Some other site listings, Synergy Sports Tech, you can see their subscribers, sbnation.com. That's a college basketball website. US Cellular Website Traffic, that's the arena itself. We had some more impressions from that. And other types of impressions that are not so much social media or online, but we gave away Visit Currituck beach towels, coolers, pens, lip balms, drawstring backpacks, visitors' guides, and people have these in their hands. That's an impression. And they carry those around. Visit currituckobx.com T-shirts with the Currituck logo on the back and the Visit Currituck OBX on the front were given out. The team, all the team members had those from all the four basketball teams. And we also had Visit Currituckobx.com bucket hats as team gifts. So these basketball players love those bucket hats. Don't know why, but they love them. So they actually came out on the arena stage with their bucket hats on. And they will take those back to the campus and will wear theirs too. So now I've kind of gone through all the impressions. I just kind of wanted to put it into an economic impact for us. On average, the daily spend by a visitor party, this is a party, in Currituck County Outer Banks is about $2,757. This includes lodging, food, entertainment, shopping, and transportation. If you multiply that by seven days, they're saying here, seven days, the total per week per visitor spend is $19,000, 19 and some change. So if we were able to attract 20 visitor parties from our conversions during the two-week timeframe of the tournament, this equates to 385, almost $386,000 in visitor's spend for a $50,000 investment. We only need to have attracted three visitor parties at $57,900 to make up for our initial advertising investment of $50,000. So we feel like it was something new for us. We've never done it before. We felt that we got some good, we got some good results from it. We're very quite pleased. And anecdotally, before I end and take questions, since the tournament, we've been approached by several other tournaments to come on board. One was Duke, that Duke's going to be in a tournament. And they want us as an advertiser for next year's basketball season. These tournaments come at a greater cost, and we're looking at about $200,000 to $250,000. So, you know, for something new, something to try, we felt that it was successful. As I said before, we always try to do new things. We try to always keep a leg up on our competitors. And actually, Outer Banks Visitors Bureau was also approached about this tournament. They turned it down, we took it, and we got the accolades. I'm excited about that. So I wanted to use the basketball term just as a vehicle to kind of show you how we go about evaluating advertising programs, particularly in the digital world. Print advertising, a little bit different. One full-page ad in a Southern Living, one full-page ad for just one time. And now, impressions would be what is their distributorship. But one ad can cost anywhere from $45,000 to $60,000 for one ad. So we feel that there was some nice return on this one. So I'm done. So if you guys have any questions.
How many television stations or radio stations carried the ball, Dennis?
I don't know how many radio stations are actually broadcasting any of it. Television, we didn't have a lot of television coverage. The coverage that we got, I believe, one of the stations from around the Garner Webb area came and got some highlights. I know we had some TV highlights, but I don't have any concrete information to give you on that.
When you're talking about increases here on the overall website statistics, and you say an increase of, in Wilmington, of 346, do you have numbers?
I do have those numbers. I can certainly give those to you. Just off the top of my head, I believe Wilmington, I think Wilmington was my, like about 6,000 inquiries during that timeframe. So it increased.
Are you seeing an increase overall in your website, or is this just this timeframe?
Well, our website statistics are definitely up from last year. We continue to grow. We just tried to isolate a couple of weeks, just so we could kind of do a comparison, just to see what was happening during the tournament time. And we felt it was very important, too, to make sure that there wasn't anything else going on out there that could have skewed those analytics. Like, were we doing a big digital campaign, which we weren't? Did we have any kind of a big magazine advertisement out there during that time? We didn't. So we just tried to rule out as much as we could to make sure that what we were seeing, we could attribute a good part of it, not all of it, because you're still going to get, you know, traffic. But what could we attribute to that tournament? The conversions were phenomenal to us. I mean, I don't think we've ever seen that kind of conversion rate before. But, you know, we were limiting, we're going after a very, a two-week audience. I can certainly do more analytics on that on a bigger timeframe, if you guys would like.
And a couple of other questions. You said Dare County did not participate?
They did not.
They were not a sponsor.
They did not participate.
Well, I guess the one thing that's bothered me the most was seeing on the website, the ball teams wearing OBX caps. That was posted on Mr. Steinberg, who was the sponsor's website, of them wearing OBX caps at the ball game that he gave out. To me, that was not appropriate. It might be something, we could look at the contract, that he might have broke the contract with us. When you see OBX, you don't think of Currituck County. And for them to be giving out OBX caps at a ball game that we have sponsored, and then it be put on a website, I have a lot of problems with that. I don't know if you're aware of him doing that or not, but it's on his website. Thank you.
Well, a couple of things, let me just say. I know we just had our, at 4:30, we had a report with our specialty on advertisement. And one of the things, a few things he showed us was that North Carolina was the number-one searched area for vacations. And it looks like we stayed in that market, which was number-one searched, which was, sounds like we did a good job with that. And another thing he brought up is that we should look at focusing a lot of our, or not a lot, but we should focus on attracting new visitors, new clientele, which I think we accomplished that from your report up there, which was good. And the third thing that he brought up is that a lot of people think of Currituck, and we should start looking at association Currituck and the Outer Banks, the same name together because people associated with that. And not to say that the cap situation probably doesn't need looked into, but one of the things he recommended was to try to incorporate that because people, I guess what he told us, they don't see Currituck. They're seeing, they search Outer Banks and then Corral, and everything else pops up. So if they were to search that, I'm sure hopefully that would come up as well. But it sounds like to me, you know, for the investment, I do some advertising radios I have in the past, it looks like we hit a good target area, and the numbers speak well. From what you're telling us, it looks like we've, I know it was a test idea, but it sounds like sporting events could be something to at least consider and look at in the future, bring before the board and discuss other opportunities. Because, you know, I'm really impressed with that, the number of impressions and visits and the number increase. So, I mean, it sounds like, like you said, for looking at the advertisement piece separately by itself, it looks like it did what you were hoping it would do.
As I said, this was a, this was kind of an opportunity for me to also take you through how we make advertising decisions. This was new. Sometimes we throw things at the wall and the stick, and sometimes they don't. We've done new initiatives in the past. For example, we did a rivalist because we thought, well, let's see how this works. We did a rivalist for two years, and it's a great program, but it really wasn't fitting our needs. So we said, okay, goodbye. But that's how we look at it. What's our return on investment? Do we do it again? We go, Stuart Campbell is here, our marketing director. He brings a lot of these things to our attention. It's just our way of looking at stuff. So I hope that was a little bit, hope I clarified some of that for you a little bit, and...
Well, I have a question. So Ms. Katie brought up TV advertising. That was not, and the intent of this was, it was to go after an online audience, right? This was not going to be a big television event?
Most of what we were looking at was online.
Okay.
Content. I mean, we were hoping that, I think there was a hope that possibly, it's a new tournament, it's a smaller tournament. I believe Kim Pomeroy said, of all the tournaments that were going on, preseason tournaments, that was his favorite, which was great, even though it's new and small. So that's...
That's it. Stuart looks like he's chomping at the bit to get up here and say something. No, okay. Just messing with you, Stuart.
But we do, we don't operate in a vacuum. I mean, we come up with our advertising or what we would like to see as our marketing plan. We bring it to the Tourism Advisory Board. They function as an advisory board, and they look at these things, particularly if it's something a little out of the ordinary, or it's a new program. We throw it at them and say, what are you thinking?
I'll tell you, I had hoped to be there, but due to the holiday and family, et cetera. But I will tell you, trying to find out scores, trying to find out what was going on was a miserable experience. So I don't know how that was being promulgated. I went to the Visit Currituck OBX, whatever our website was, and you would think we'd have up-to-date stats who won the game. And I was very disappointed, not only from our whatever, but there was just not, I could not find what was going on very well at all. At one point, I did see some video from there. It certainly wasn't produced by us, but, you know, but it, so that would be the one thing I would say, the quality of what I saw or what I was able to see, that does not rise to the level of what I would expect out of Currituck County. So that's something that we're going to need to, whatever the venue looks like, we're going to need to look at that a little bit harder.
Let's see if we do it again.
I don't think we could sponsor a little big tournament going forward.
I just like...
It's any advertising, it's always a learning experience, too, especially if it's new. Things come up you didn't anticipate, things happen that you didn't anticipate that are great, and some things happen that, oh.
I'd just like to...
Could have done that. We could have done better.
I'd just like to say one thing. Like I said, our work session at 4:30 today with the tourism, that you guys, thank you for the job that y'all are doing and your staff. You know, I mean, there's always bumps in the road, but y'all do a good job. And the numbers show all these people in the audience weren't here, but we appreciate you. It keeps our tax dollars down, and good job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the rest of your staff. All right, moving on, public hearings. Put the glasses on for this one. PB 17-14, Currituck County, Solar Text Amendment. Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Use Standards, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurements to Add Solar Energy Facilities as an allowable use in the county. Normally, I would turn that up to Ms. Lusisro, but I'm going to throw a curveball and hit Mr. McCree. We've had some discussion about when commissioners need to step back from a vote or not. And the board's talked about it with the county attorney. We've heard that Commissioner Etheridge may be involved in something. So just wanted Mr. McCree to inform us and you what that means. So if you would, Mr. McCree?
Well, the general rule is that a commissioner is required or obligated to vote unless, as Section 153A-44 says, "The board may excuse a member from voting, but only upon questions involving the member's own financial interest or official conduct, or on matters on which the member is prohibited from voting under 153A 340, subparagraph G." That section relates specifically to zoning matters. Zoning matters are typically legislative in nature, and so a decision made by the board or an individual commissioner on how they might vote is typically within their discretion. But this particular statute does need to be kept in mind as it provides that a member of the Board of County Commissioners shall not vote on any zoning text amendment where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. Now, what does that mean? It's kind of fairly broad language. And so you kind of look at it, and some of the writings from the School of Government as well analyzing this statute, it'll come down to kind of going through another process to determine if indeed there is a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. And that might then be for the member to consider the number of persons that would be affected by the zoning text amendment. Zoning text amendments, of course, typically apply to all persons and all properties within the county. So that'd be one thing to consider. The next would be the extent of the financial interest that the commissioner might incur or experience, either to their benefit or to their detriment, should the zoning text amendment pass or fail. And then lastly, the likelihood that the financial impact will occur. Is it more likely than not, or is it merely speculative in nature that there may be a financial impact to that commissioner based upon the outcome of the vote on the zoning text amendment? Now, not knowing to what extent there may be any commissioner financial impact, it's going to be upon each commissioner to make a determination as to whether they need to make any kind of disclosure, or can determine or have determined themselves that they may well have a financial impact based upon the outcome of the vote on this particular zoning text amendment, and then look to the board to be relieved and excused from voting on the matter. But I don't have any personal information or knowledge as to what extent that might be related to any commissioner, and so it would need to be left to that commissioner to disclose.
Okay, thank you. Well, as you know, as the rumor light turns in Currituck County, so we've heard a few things, and I just wanted to clarify that. And if there were any disclosures that need to be made by any of the board members at this time.
Mr. Chairman, the solar company years ago did contact my husband and my brother-in-law about a small piece of land up on East Ridge. I think it was, I don't even know, maybe 10 acres. I have no earthly idea how many acres it was. And my husband and my brother-in-law told them they were not interested in leasing any land to them. So that's my disclosure.
Okay, thank you. Miles, you good?
My family has had discussions with one of the solar companies about possibilities, but nothing concrete.
Okay, thank you much. All right, got that off the test. Ms. Lusisro, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like the slide right here says, this is to add solar facilities back as an allowable use in the county because currently it is not a permitted use within Currituck County. Solar, utility-scale solars are not a permitted use in Currituck County. A little bit of history before I get into the technical details of this text amendment. We do have two utility-scale projects in the county that have been permitted, approved, permitted, and built. The Shawboro one and the Moayok one behind ranchland. And it was all the citizen feedback that we heard, county staff and the county commissioners, that instigated in February of 2017 for the board to remove utility-scale solar as a permitted use within the county. solar as a permitted use within the county, so that you can take time to get some regulations in place to address all these concerns that you were hearing from the citizens. So what you have before you tonight are actually two different versions of this text amendment. And I'm going to go through the original draft, where the board of commissioners spent about five work sessions going through, trying to address all the citizen concerns and your concerns and staff concerns, getting the language correct. We had about five work sessions, if I'm correct. Leanne?
Thank you.
Sounds about right.
And so this, what you, what I'm going to go through first is the board of commissioners' original draft of the solar energy facilities. The original draft, the first thing was to remove wind energy facility large from the use table, to eliminate that. Something in here that I did not do is that we were going to add solar energy facilities back to the permitted use table as a use permit only allowed in the AG, only allowed in the AG zoning district. So it still would require a use permit to come back before the board of commissioners for approval. Another change would be to add solar energy facility, which we then refer to SFE, to the Chapter 10. And that's two or more solar collectors or photovoltaic panels intended to capture energy from sunlight, convert to electricity, and save or deliver the electricity for off-site use. I highlighted off-site use because if you want to put three solar panels on your house for you to use your house, that's fine, as long as it's used on-site. It's, the key is the off-site use. So those are the easy things. Then we get into the use, for the specific standards for solar energy, solar energy facilities. And I'm just going to go through these, and sorry, we're getting kind of technical, so I did include a lot of language in here. One of the first issues we addressed was location. This language would include no more than two abutting properties. They would not be allowed in areas that were designated full service by the land use plan, and SFEs would not be allowed in significant natural heritage areas. That is a data set we have that's from the North Carolina Natural Heritage Program. The size would do not exceed 250 acres, or half the acreage, a size of the property. Setbacks, this is all equipment and fencing, this is everything. The original draft, 300 feet from major arterial right-ofways, 150 feet from all other right-ofways and property lines, 100 feet from KAMA, Army Corps waters, wetlands, and then for projects with two abutting properties, the interior common property line, the setbacks must be met. For height and configuration, the maximum height for all the solar panels, all equipment on the project would be 15 feet, and they must be configured to avoid glare beyond the property lines. As far as sound, construction hours limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and if they were located near a school, they could not have any pile-driving activities during school hours. For buffers and screenings, a type D opaque buffer would be required to be installed prior to construction, prior to issuance of any type of building permit for the panels. There was a requirement for certification from a professional, a landscape architect, or an arborist, or some type of professional, that the buffer will reach full height and opacity within three years. The opacity would be viewed from the property lines. Buffer was not required on any interior common property lines for budding, for budding properties. There would be a performance guarantee that would be required, 115% of the cost of the buffer, and that performance guarantee would remain valid until the buffer is opaque. And if the buffer is not opaque after three years, then the county could then use that performance guarantee to supplement the buffer, and there would be more time allowed for that buffer. If supplemental plannings are needed, more time would be allowed for the buffer to grow in. A development plan would be required for all SFEs, and that would be a major site plan, and we would take it through the major site plan process. And on that plan, it would need the location of all the building structures, panels, and equipment. The distance to the property lines from all this equipment would need to be specified. All signs, lighting, parking areas, both construction and permanent, driveways and buffers, they all need to be shown on this. The 100-foot setback from KAMA, Army Corps wetlands and waters would need to be shown, and it's like that for the setbacks, for the, the common interior property line for budding properties. Horizontal and vertical elevations would need to be shown. The UL 1703 safety certification would need to be part of this application, along with street access approval. And then 30% of the total area of the project, the solar project, would need to be kept in pollinator habitat or cultivation plan, and that would, these are all parts of the development plan that would need to be included. Some of the environmental concerns that this text amendment addresses, that ground cover would need to be established, that you couldn't have erosion, you had to establish ground cover. Grass and weeds could not exceed, no taller than two feet. You could not use herbicide to maintain the vegetation on this, on this property. I'm sorry, grass and weeds no taller than two feet unless they're part of the pollinator habitat, and that would be those more natural grasses and things, and those would not be, had to meet that two-foot requirement. Groundwater monitoring wells would be required near the center of the site and along the exterior property lines at the lowest point, and they would have to be every 2,000 feet. The testing results would be required before construction, and then again annually, and the standard would be the North Carolina Health and Human Services private well in organic chemical contaminants. And if the initial testing shows contaminants, you cannot increase any of the contamination. You also must submit a solar energy facility impact analysis. These got out of order. So, and impacts and resources affected soils, air quality, water resources, ecology, land use, water management, socioeconomics. They got a little bit out of order. We also, this language also has a decommissioning plan required, and decommissioning removes, includes removal of everything. All the equipment, all the underground equipment, above-ground equipment, and also includes grading and reseeding. The plan has to be certified by an engineer or contractor, and it needs to include the lease agreement, the responsible party, a materials list, a removal cost, and a restoration cost. This decommissioning plan would need to be updated every two years for any time a change of ownership with either the property or the leaseholder, the people who actually own the equipment that's generating the electricity. If after a 12-month time period where no electricity is generated, then they have 12 months to decommission and to complete decommissioning of the project. There are also, with this decommissioning plan, a performance guarantee is required. It must be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit, so prior to the beginning of construction. It's 115% of the cost estimate to remove and restore the property, move all the equipment and restore all the property. This 115% cannot be reduced by salvage value, it must be the full amount. And then every two years will be reevaluated with the, as with the decommissioning plan, and the amount cannot be decreased when evaluated every two years, and the guarantee shall remain valid until the site is restored. So that is the highlights of the draft language, the original draft language that the board of commissioners have worked on, the five work session. Are there any questions at this point about any of that language?
I do, I have a question. You said this just started. Solar was told no January or February 2017?
That's when it was removed as a permitted use from.
23 months ago.
So yes.
Okay.
Any more questions?
The very first item you mentioned, Chapter 10. It says for off-site use, but if I've got a residential solar array, and it's sitting there collecting sunlight during the day, it's putting power back into Dominion's grid. So that's off-site use. So effectively, residential solar is not allowed if you've got two panels or more.
I would view that as the intent would be to be used more on-site, and that is just the nature of the grid, of the electrical grid, to be putting back if you're not using, if you're not actively using it at that moment. So I would view that as the intent would be to allow the residents to use it on-site.
Like the, the other definition is a solar energy facility, so you're not a facility in a commercial sense if you have it at your residence. Okay. Any more questions? All right. With that, I will open the public comment.
Wait, so I have, so that was the original.
Oh, keep going.
Sorry.
By all means, I thought you were done with this.
So we took this to the planning board, and the planning board made some recommendations that were not consistent with the original draft that the board of commissioners worked on. So I wanted to go through those, and these are just where they differ with what the original draft was. So you don't, you have to listen to me say all these other things again. But the planning board, their draft, they wanted to keep wind energy facilities in the use table, and they were going to say work with the Department of Defense in the Northwest Annex to review projects on a case-by-case basis as far as wind facilities. They still added, wanted solar energy facilities as a use, as a use, needing a use permit in the AG, in the AG zoning district. So their specific standards for solar energy, solar energy facilities, as far as location, there would be no limit on abutting properties. They could have as many properties per project as the project needed. There would be no size limitation. Setbacks, they suggested 150 feet for major arterial right-ofways, 75 from all other right-ofways and property lines, 30 foot from KAMA and Army Corps waters and wetlands, and no setbacks for any interior common property lines. The maximum height, they suggested 20 feet, and they didn't make any specific recommendation for construction hours, other than they must meet existing light and noise ordinances we have in place, but no construction on Sunday. Their suggestion for buffers and screener, screening would be that the type D buffer, an opaque buffer, to be installed prior to a certificate of compliance or occupancy near final inspection, prior to that being issued, that the buffer would need to be installed. There's no certification required from any professional on opacity or projected growth, and instead of three years, the opacity would need to be reached after five years of growth. For the development plan that would need to be submitted, once again, the three, the 30-foot setback from the KAMA and Army Corps waters and wetlands, and instead of actual approval for street access, the application to the, from, to the appropriate agency for street access would be required. 20% of the total project area could be held in habitat, in pollinator habitat or active cultivation plan, instead of the 30 from the original one. As far as the other environmental concerns, their draft, herbicides would be allowed to be used. Two ground monitoring wells would be required, one near the center of the site and one at the lowest elevation. If the wells were within 50 feet of each other, only one well would be required. They did specify that the wells would need to be at least 20 feet deep. The test results would be required before construction, then at year two, and then at every five years if no contaminants were found. If contaminants were found, then test again at year three, and once no contaminants are found, test every five years. The decommissioning plan would be required, similar, but the plan would be updated every five years instead of every two years, or a change of ownership, again. The performance guarantee would be reviewed as part of, as part of the decommissioning plan every five years, and would be reduced by the salvage value, and the amount can be adjusted based on projected cost, up or down. So those are the two different drafts that you have before you tonight, and I'll be glad to answer questions about either one of those. And so the planning board would recommend approval of their draft that they sent before you, that did receive an affirmative vote. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do you know where they came up with the 20-foot height?
I think it was some input from some solar companies, that that height would give them enough room to have the, the tracking, the panels that move and follow the sun, that I guess maybe a maximum tilt that would give them, 20-foot would give them opportunity to use those and have them at full tilt.
Do you know what the, what the two current facilities are at height-wise? Just off the top of your head, I know it's a.
I think it's 15.
Right, okay.
And Shawboro is just static, it doesn't move.
Right, doesn't move, right.
It's probably five feet, maybe six feet tall.
Okay.
Do you know about how long they worked on it before they made their recommendations?
Um.
Was it done in one workshop session?
They heard it in October, and they gave us feedback. October and November, they did not meet in November, and they gave us this draft in December.
Thank you. Anything further from the board? Okay, is that it for you, Mark? This time around, before I cut you off?
I'm finished now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll open public comment, and just a few things. As a reminder to those of you that signed up tonight to come up, we have a three-minute rule. You'll have a light on, on the podium up here. Green means go, yellow means speed up to get through the light, and red means stop. So we've got quite a few people signed up this evening, and so with that, I will call up Mr. Jerry Wright, and if you would, please, get your name and address when you come up this evening, so we have it for the record.
My name is Jerry Wright. I live at 204 Jerry's Way in Jarvisburg, North Carolina, which is in Lower Kirtuck. I was shortly hired by Kirtuck County back in 1973 to teach school here, two years, and I taught two, two years, and I like the outdoors, as you can see. And so I decided to pursue a career in farming, and this will be my 46-year of farming in Kirtuck County. I've had four generations before me farm. When I started farming, there were 23 farmers south of Kornjock Bridge. There are nine active farmers that meet legal requirements in that same territory, and so we're some wildlife endangered species in the south end of the county. I think we all pride ourselves in living in a county that has a rural atmosphere and rural feature, rural features, lots of wildlife features. I feel like the solar panels are one way to help cure some things that are wrong in our environment, and hope that we'll try and come up with some rules where they are allowed. I do get a newspaper from Delaware, Maryland, and Virginia, and these facilities are used by many, many farmers in those areas to help run facilities on a property, whether they're grain facilities, irrigation facilities, duck impoundment facilities, and whatever. They, they put up the facilities, and then the current is used either on their facility or they're given credit for what they produce, and a credit on their bill for basically running farm shops and many uses that we don't, I guess, think about when we're thinking about solar and what was, what was going on. My sense is that solar will play more and more of a opportunity for homeowners as time goes by in our country, and that we need to try and think about allowing the use. For about four years, we negotiated and talked to some solar people about some facilities on the land that we owned. They came and offered us a contract about 10 days before you set up your moratorium. We have not talked much since then, hoping that the county would actually solve some of the questions and concerns that citizens and landowners have, and especially about the quality of panels and their impact. the quality of panels and their impact on soils and waters in the county. So, with that, I'll say that we would like to see the use started back when the concerns are addressed about those things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Robert Griffin. Not here? How about Kelly Griffin?
Hi. Kelly Griffin, 436 Poplar Branch Road. I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and my husband, Robert, that wasn't able to make tonight's meeting. I'm here to speak in support of adding the solar energy facilities as an allowable use in Currituck County. I also ask that you respectfully consider the recommendations of the planning board's review of the amendment. I believe the planning board has diligently performed their duties with the amendment that has been brought for your consideration tonight. Robert was one of the public speakers at the commissioners' meeting a couple of years ago when the current ban on solar facilities was enacted. As Currituck County residents and landowners, we strongly believe that landowners should be able to make decisions about uses for their property as long as they don't harm their, excuse me, harm their neighbors. As was said that night, we believe there should be reasonable restrictions regarding the solar facilities. However, banning the solar facilities was not reasonable, but that's where we are. We hope that tonight, as a vote's taken regarding the amendment, the board will consider the comments of those who speak in support of the amendment. I hope that you'll respectfully consider the recommendations of the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Jarvis?
Good evening.
Charles Jarvis, 1211 Toxie Road, Elizabeth City.
I was going to speak to some of the money aspects of this. After talking to Tracy Sample from the Tax Department, the two operating solar farms in the Currituck County today consist of approximately 2,400 acres. $316,000 was paid in taxes on those acres in 2018. That works out to $131.60 per acre. As farmland, that amount would have been $15,960 or $6.65 per acre. That's about 20 times revenue for the county. If that was in houses, which I'm sure y'all know that's, that's not going to be the case, solar farms, once established, would be a silent green neighbor, unseen by the general public, would never call 911 on its neighbors and should keep its neighbors' taxes lower and I reiterate, should. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andy White?
Hi, good evening. I'm not Andy White.
Okay.
My name is Kevin Thornton. I'm the Public Affairs Representative for First Solar for the East Coast. I'd like to request, since we have two First Solar representatives to speak tonight, I'd like to request that my three minutes be added to Andy White's, if that'd be okay.
All right, go ahead. Thank you. And would you please give us your name for the record, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and I am the aforementioned Andy White.
Okay.
So, thank you to my colleague, Kevin. And thank you to the members of the commission tonight. I'm the first representative of the solar industry. I'd like to tell you a little bit about, about my company. I work for First Solar. We are an American-based company. We are the only American manufacturer of solar panels and we're interested in doing a project here in Currituck to the tune of about 1,000 acres is what we're targeting. A little bit about First Solar, we have a 25-plus-year history in research, development, manufacture, development of projects themselves and then continued maintenance and operations of existing and continuing solar projects. We have experience from start to finish. Over the course of our history, we also have the best cash position of any solar company in the country operating today. Now, we're here today to voice our support despite the shortcomings of the planning board's recommendations. It's not ideal what we like to see, but that's the compromise that frequently happens in working with government opposed to the, in opposition to the Board of Commissioners' draft, which is effectively for us, an extension of the prohibition and the ban on solar development in the county. Specifically, we have concerns about a number of the, the elements of the, of the ordinance, performance guarantees, visual buffering in place before construction begins, groundwater monitoring, et cetera. But I want to focus on the, the size limitation because that's the real issue for us being able to compete in the marketplace. The 250-acre limitation doesn't allow for a project to economically be viable. And shutting the door to First Solar and companies like us, we feel that the county's missing out on an opportunity, as previously indicated, to diversify its tax base and blocking economic development that requires a little by way of services and opens the door to other development that may require more services or, or riskier development as well and I'll allude to that later, or I'll address that later. So, the question is, why does that acreage limitation affect a company like First Solar? In, in electrical generation, cost is a driving factor and, and what we're doing right now is going head-to-head with traditional energy projects and we need to be able to compete on a, on a basis in the marketplace. And how do we do, how do we do that? How do we get to cost parity? Well, we do so by making sure that we have economics of size and scale in our projects and that's what we're seeing right now as trends. Right here in North Carolina, you have Duke just down the road. Its, its average project size for a recent solicitation was upwards of 75 megawatts for projects that requires up to 750 acres for development. You also have a number of large customers as well, larger corporates seeking power to be able to, to hedge their energy costs long-term. Again, they're asking for prices that are at the same, same level as traditional energy sources. We're able to meet those needs, but only if we're able to have an economically viable project. And as a result, because of these demands and because we're able to deliver lower and lower-cost energy, all of us benefit whenever we plug anything into the wall. A portion of that's coming from solar. In fact, we represented solar over the past four years, 20 to 30% of the new megawatt generation additions in the United States overall to utilities and we like to be, like to have Currituck as part of that, that future. For First Solar as a developer, we, as I mentioned before, we have experience, we have a good cash balance, we are responsible and a well-capitalized developer. We are a good neighbor where we develop. We're developing in the east, we have projects that are in development and we're starting to turn dirt in Georgia, working with Georgia Power of a larger scale, also Tennessee Valley Authority area in Alabama, as well as Florida in Tampa Electric. And that's, that's where we're seeing the market going again. These are all larger-scale, larger footprint projects. By limiting the projects to 150, or I'm sorry, 250 acres, one of the unintended consequences that could be problematic is that it may invite and open the door to those developers who may not have a stable economics, may not have looked as closely at the cost-benefit and therefore they could be a riskier development for the county and potentially cause some of the very problems and the heartache that you're looking to prevent. For a company like First Solar, that's not how we develop projects. We put the effort and the time and the consideration, the analysis to make sure it's a successful project and that's what we stand behind with our development. Unfortunately, with the Board of Commissioners' draft, as drafted in 2018, it would foreclose most likely our ability to make a project pencil with that type of limitation in the county. So, with that said, I really do appreciate the time and willingness to open up public comment as the commission takes its, its vote and I look forward to answering your questions, but I, but certainly want to reiterate that we, we do support the planning board's recommended language in contrast to the Board of Commissioners' prior version.
Okay, thank you. We don't typically ask questions during public comment, it's just for you to come up, state your piece and us to listen.
Should there be other comments or questions, I'm happy to answer as a, as a representative of manufacturer.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Philip Martin? Or Phyllis?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board. My name is Philip Martin, 5310 South Austin Avenue, Durham, North Carolina. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I work with Cypress Creek Renewables. We are one of the largest solar developers in the country with over 2 gigawatts owned and operated across the United States, including 130-plus projects in 55 counties in North Carolina. I've had a hand in helping permit most of those. We're based out of our Durham office where we have our control center that operates all of our solar farms across the country and we also have an office in Asheville. My background's in planning and real estate. I've worked in northeastern North Carolina, I've also worked in Raleigh. I've seen the benefits of, that solar has brought to both rural and urban North Carolina, increasing the tax base with no county services needed. As you heard earlier, the taxes in Currituck last year were, or in 2018, were over $300,000. I understand that your first experience with solar in this county might have not been the best, but companies like First Solar and Cypress Creek are here to show you that we are good corporate citizens, that we want to make sure that we benefit the communities that we are developing in. We're just asking for our industry to be treated fairly. My initial review of the first draft ordinance was, showed that solar facilities were entered back into the UDA, but it was still a ban on solar due to the restrictions placed on the development. I appreciate the planning board for listening to our concerns and their recommendation for, for the text amendment is much, much improved. However, there are a few items that I still think need to be thought through further. I'm glad to see that the planning board removed the acreage restriction. Any landowner or farmer should have the ability to supplement and diversify their income while also increasing the tax base for the county. Cypress Creek understands your concern with groundwater. We understand your want for monitoring wells. We're fine with that. I just think the process needs to be thought through a little, a little more. Currently, you're, you're looking at the standards for private well standards, that's not feasible. They should be meeting North Carolina groundwater standards. Currently, the ordinance reads that you're trying to treat compliance wells like they are public drinking wells. There are naturally occurring substances in the groundwater that is already, that could already be higher than groundwater quality standards. Also, for monitoring wells, you have to have baseline data at different times of the year due to the rising groundwater. Contamination could come from multiple sources off-site due to topography, drainage patterns and storms. This could be a red flag for financing parties doing solar deals. I would also ask that you look at allowing the salvage value be added to the decommissioning bond due to the commodity prices and the fact that it has to be updated every two years so values can change, the bond can be adjusted as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Merrick, is it Merrick Parrott? Is that right?
It is, sorry for my bad handwriting.
No, you're, you're much better than some.
Good evening, Commissioners, Merrick Parrott. I'm here tonight representing, got a couple extra seconds. Jimmy Farabee, a local landowner and taxpaying citizen of Currituck County. I'm an attorney and I've worked in solar across the state at local zoning hearings and I'd like to speak to you tonight about three things: property owner rights, solar as a use in the community and briefly on economics of solar. In my work, I've had the opportunity to meet many landowners whose lives have been positively impacted by leasing or selling some of their farmland for solar use. Solar allows family farmers to use less productive land in a low-impact and financially productive manner that helps support the farm and maintain the farmland for future use. Often, developers enter into lease agreements with landowners, which provides reliable income to the landowner, which is not tied to weather patterns or fluctuations of commodity markets as farming is and is not offset by operational costs as farming is. Depending on the circumstances, the income to the landowner from solar can be several times as much as the income from farming. It's stable, reliable income that the landowner can then pour back into the local community. The Farabee family has lived in Currituck County for not decades, but centuries, since 1726, to be exact. Jimmy's been farming his land his entire life, but it's getting harder for farmers generally to profit and for the next generation to continue farming. Jimmy is now interested in exploring the option of leasing part of his farmland for solar development and this is consistent with North Carolina's commitment to property rights. The underlying theme of property rights is that landowners are expected to use their property reasonably without unduly interfering with the rights of owners of contiguous land. This property right is the same right whether the property owner owns 10 acres, 100 acres or 1,000 acres. Allowing taxpaying citizens to use their property for a solar farm will not interfere with the rights of their neighbors and the county should not prevent their citizens from such reasonable use. For this reason, I urge you tonight to approve the planning board version of the text amendment, which balances property owner rights with protecting adjacent citizens. Not only is solar beneficial for property owners who enter in these, to these lease agreements, but it's a good neighbor and has less of an impact on adjoining property owners than many other uses. It's a low-impact use, it has minimal land disturbance and has a low visual profile, often compared with the visual impact of like a greenhouse you would see in the community. It's often cited in rural areas and is compatible with surrounding agriculture and residential agriculture uses. It does not create owner, there is no discernible noise at the fence lines, there are no emissions, it creates minimal traffic, less than a single-family home. And further, the components can be decommissioned and the land can go back to farming at the end of the life of the project. Again, it'll be good economically for the county, it'll boost the local economy during construction, create jobs for members of the community, give a boost to the local hospitality industry. After construction, it'll contribute to the county tax base for the life of the project. I'm out of time. Mr. Farabee is here tonight and I think he has signed up to speak as well.
He is, thank you.
Thank you.
And he is next, actually, Mr. Farabee.
James Farabee Jr., 1900 Indian Town Road. I think Ms. Parrott said everything I got to say, just a fact. But I've been farming for 65 years in Currituck family. My family heritage has been here since 1726. With solar energy, there is no burden to the county, water taps, education cost or welfare cost. Currituck County reaped benefits from solar energy, including tax income that can go to help schools in any way they see fit. I am not requiring anything from the county except the right to use my land for what I consider to be the best use. Over time, farming has become a difficult occupation. I have another generation starting to farm as this would help everyone. As you are aware, I have considered leasing partial of my property to solar project. This project is on a secondary route and can be screened properly. Please forgive, give us the right to this use of our land. This project can be used to benefit the county as well as my family. This would not be a hazard to the county as we are required. Any amenities? I believe this is an economic good way to, to use the land for myself, my family and the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Josh Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the members of the Board of Commissioners for having us here this evening. The chamber neither supports nor opposes the text amendment you're considering this evening, but we have expressed support for the renewal industry, renewable energy industry as a whole. And I think as a county, we want to be looking at expanding the base of our industrial footprint and we have a county, we want to see a community that looks to the future and embraces new technologies and new ways of doing business. And this is certainly a new way of doing business and a new technology that I think in a forward-looking county and community, we want to embrace as a way to recruit younger generations and new businesses to this area. The chamber has also expressed the concern over the years that many families in the county, for them, their land is their largest asset. And this, solar and renewable projects, give them a way to monetize their land asset by either sale or lease. In this way, they could, we should give the landowner the right to decide whether their land will be used for agricultural, residential or solar development. So, we would urge that you protect property rights in either ordinance or either text amendment you consider, but look at making it a choice for the landowner. And we have consistently had issues with the solar ban, but glad to see that you all are looking to overturn the ban tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Mr. Paul "I Can't Stay Away" O'Neill? Keeps coming back.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I've sat in your seat before and over the last 25 years, I can tell you... I've sat in your seat before, and over the last 25 years, I can tell you in Currituck County, we've built a new high school, two elementary schools, a middle school, done two remodels and expansions, built a new courthouse, a new senior center, an extension center, a YMCA, and extensive parks and recreations, as well as a library in Moayak. And I can tell you that the Boards of Commissioners over those years did not have the opportunity to look at something that would generate revenue and income to the county. We had to rely on Mr. Scanlon and the Finance Department to be creative on how they were going to finance all of these buildings, projects. So I've read in the last several months that the Board of Commissioners have instructed the school board to start looking at finding a large tract of property to build another school for, I believe, an elementary school and possibly some other schools in the future. I've also read, which I'm thankful that everyone said, tax increases are not on your agenda or on your consideration at this time. But I will tell you, with the solar farms, they do provide and will provide additional revenue with no cost to the county. No cost to educate any children, no social services, no law enforcement calls, no fire calls, no EMS, and another thing is no additional year-round traffic. One of the things that jumped out to me as I looked at the two versions, and y'all are going to have to decide what you ultimately do, but I would submit that the first version is more strict than what we require for subdivision in Currituck County. Think about that. Another thing that it does is it shows companies that are looking to move to Currituck County or start up that we're open for business in the 21st century. Our younger generation is not like me. They're up and coming. We're kind of at the middle point or where we're going to be in our careers. We're not looking at starting businesses. But I tell you, the young generation is looking at how a county looks at land uses and different things that you allow. Another thing, this will allow landowners options with their land beyond a subdivision. Right now, it's either farm or subdivision, and we see what happens when we get subdivisions are chosen. It could be the very thing that allows some farmers to stay in business and continue farming and pass their farms on to the next generation. The farmers are not going to put their most productive land in solar. They're going to put that non-productive land that does not yield very well. Solar is environmentally safe, and the cost per kilowatt is now comparable to fossil-fuel productions of power. I support and urge the Board to adopt an ordinance that will remove the barriers to this new technology that the next generation supports and will help us move our economy into the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Janie Miggs?
Thank you all for letting me speak. It seems to me, from what I've been hearing, that allowing solar facilities, particularly right now in the northern part of the county, could be a win-win for most everybody. For the Commissioners, I see it as a tool for slowing growth. Every 150-acre tract that's developed translates into at least 100 houses, which translates into two children, which translates into a half a school, which translates into other things that are needed like water distribution, fire, rescue, and so forth. So I see this as something that you would use as a tool. For the landowners, I see the option to sell or rent. You know, we can retain our land but still make a reasonable return on it. And farming is not reasonable in today's market for some land. For the solar company, of course, that's a taxpaying business with little impact on services or infrastructure in the county. So with all that being said, I have a prediction. I think that the solar farms of today bear little resemblance to what they will be in 20 to 25 years. The large panels that you see will become 6-inch by 6-inch panels in short order, getting the same energy amount that the larger ones do today. Remember computers, many of you may not be old enough, but I remember when computers took an entire room, and now you can put it in your pocket, the same kind of computer. If these 150-acre to maybe 500-acre tracts of land are dotted throughout the county with solar facilities on them, when those facilities become small, the solar companies are going to want to reduce their holdings. The county by that time will have more and more development. It needs land, and I think in 20 years, the two of them could make an exchange. And just in case you're wondering, I'm planning to be here 20, 25 years from now to chuck on them to see whether or not that happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you much. Joe Etheridge? And if you would, I need to run everybody, just state your name and address, please, when you come up.
Joe Etheridge, 882 Shawboro Road, Shawboro, North Carolina. The previous speakers have spoken to the Board of Commissioners, the text amendment is being abandoned, and that's basically all it is. And you've seen that because all they've done is gone to Camden County and started building farms there. So if you're, you know, if you're not serious about doing this, you've wasted everybody's time here tonight because what is, what they have laid out is not feasible for any solar company. You know, all we want is a fair shake, just like the, they can't do, they can't build but from certain hours. Well, they build houses on Sundays. No, you know, it's just not fair. There's no apple for apple. It's apple and zucchini. We just like to have a fair shake. You know, the truth is, if we're not allowed to do something, those of us on the edge are going to turn to houses, and it's going to turn to more economic draw on the county. I just wish that y'all would see the long term instead of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Karen Pierce?
I'm Karen Pierce, 567 Currituck Highway, Coin Joke. And all I can say is just I really agree with what everybody else has said. And the point he just brought up about you can't build during school hours, I just, they can build houses, they can do everything else. And as far as beauty, what is the definition of beauty? I rode through Camden County today, over towards Shiloh, and I was really surprised at all the solar farms that I saw over there. And you know what? They didn't really look ugly to me. They looked like to me that they were concerned about our future. And it's just like, he just said, you know, we have pushed all the ones in Camden, they're searching everywhere else. Let them come here to Currituck, and don't be so strict. It's something positive that can come. Thank you.
Thank you much. Mr. Thomas Wright?
My name is Thomas Wright. I live in Jarvisburg, I own Deep Creek Farm. And I wrote out some things to say to you tonight, but the previous speakers have really spoke to a lot of the things that are really concerns, you know. As I sat there and watched some of the folks coming up, and I thought about, I don't know, you see other voices like Mr. Farabee's father, but all these people spent generations trying to be here. And I guess I wondered, do you folks understand how hard it is now farming? And these folks are just trying to find an alternative way to supplement their incomes so they can survive. And y'all come up with standards to, I mean, I can get a commercial building in Corolla, and it's a zero setback? Zero. No setback. And I think she said, somebody, folks want 300-foot setbacks? I mean, it's just, I don't know, it's like we're, we're, you're farmers, you're neighbors, but we're second-class citizens, like the way you treat our land and our use compared to somebody that has a subdivision? I mean, these folks are just trying to find a way to have some income so they can survive. And you get the feeling through the restrictions, you know, I just, you know, I don't get it. I visit another area in this hemisphere two or three times in a year, and the last two times I've been down there, 98% of their power is renewable. 98% of their power coming in my house down there is renewable. Where is the concern that we contribute to, you know, maybe several different kinds of power? It didn't have to all be solar, but maybe it can be a blend of gas and some different alternatives, but it's a way we can all contribute, even the county, to, you know, multitude of things that we can have some way to generate energy. But we also, as a rural, you know, rural landowners, would like to participate ourselves. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have signed up tonight. Would anyone else who came in maybe late or didn't sign up like to speak to this issue this evening? None? Okay. Thank you all. Close, public comment. And we've got a lot to discuss here as a board, and I think the easiest thing for us to do at this time, because of the two disparity, the disparity between the two, is to just kind of take this apart one at a time. And so that's going to take a little while. And at this moment, I'll just call a five-minute recess to stretch the legs before we get back into this and collect thoughts. Good evening. I'll call the meeting back to order. So at this time, I've just been asked to allow the various Commissioners to make comments. So I think I'll start with Mr. Beaumont, just go to the right, and let everyone kind of bring up some concerns, thoughts, congestion, suggestions, congestions, and any other things that happen to happen this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first thing I'd like to bring up is that what is not captured in the Planning Board's interpretation or what their thoughts on the ordinance are really what was, what went into the decisions that were part of what the Board of Commissioners had come to. And the first thing I would suggest that those that spoke about property rights is that in fact, you know, we're looking at granting the construction of solar facilities back in the county, whereas as of right now, there are no permitted uses, solar is not permitted as a use within Currituck County. So this is an expansion of what's currently being gone, which is currently being done. And in fact, part of that is in deference to the landowners that have farms that are looking to supplement their income. The one thing I'd like to, you know, remind everybody is that, you know, we all have a right, in fact, let me back up. The whole concept of the Unified Development Ordinance is in fact a document that infringes upon the property rights of people within the county. It's by its very nature, it limits what you can and you can't do. It tells you how far from property lines that you're allowed to build. And so that document as it exists, there is no pure property rights ownership, per se, without some degree of oversight by the government that's represented. So I'm going to try and go quickly through this. Do you want me to touch on wind, or is that?
I don't think that's even a question.
Okay, got it. All right. So the first thing that the Planning Board had a problem, and it had to do with unlimited number of properties to be allowed to function as one project, the problem with that became in some of the earlier designs of solar projects that were brought forward or floated amongst the community, you literally had properties that had solar on three sides. And as they connected, or as the attempt was to build this, you know, conglomeration of solar panels, and the Board felt that that was of concern, and so consequently, that's where that limitation came from. Maximum size was a similar concern, and, you know, something that got mentioned incorrectly a couple times is, yeah, 250 acres is the limit, or half of the property, which is, whichever is greater. So, you know, large tracts of land are still going to get, are still going to be able to construct a solar on at least 50, or on 50% of it. Relative to setbacks, I'd like to point out that the 300-foot setback was in fact initiated by a solar firm within the county, as well as the berm construction, as well as the vegetative growth. So the county's not even the one that came up with that design spec. That was actually done by one of Cypress Creek and one of First Solar's competitors. Let's see. Okay, relative to the noise, the Planning Board's interpretation was to go with the noise ordinance. The problem with the noise ordinance, and, well, for one, you know, we put limitations in there because of the abuse of the system that went on at the time. And Commissioner, what's your name? McCord is well aware of that because he in fact was one of the law enforcement officials that had to respond to excessive use after hours. It's not, and I'm going to just, I don't know that anybody lives closer to a solar development than I do in this room. If there is, I'm not sure it is. I'm definitely the closest commissioner to a solar facility. When the Shawboro facility was built, was being built on Saturday, my son was getting married, and thank God, they actually stopped at 5 o'clock, which was cool because the reception, which we held at the farm, began at about 6:00. So at least the ceremony was free of the incessant metallic pounding noises caused by the driving of the posts. And it's not that it was loud, it's that it never stopped. It went on and on and on. Commissioner Etheridge and I share a grandson whose comment to my wife was that the noise of the pounding is driving me crazy. It was going through the school, it was audible. Now, I have a child that is sound, that has challenges with auditory processing. That is an absolute obstruction to that child getting an education, hence the education piece that we tried to put in. Relative to the buffer and the agricultural screen, okay, that serves several purposes. Everybody, you know, we're all concerned about it being just a visible screen and screening of the panels, and that it will do. But probably, you know, a significant piece of that whole aspect is to help reduce noise due to the vegetative canopy as well as the berm. It will also help in dust reduction. And there are people in this audience who live very close to a solar facility who, and I have witnessed it myself, when it looks very similar to a very large helicopter landing in the desert because of how much dirt is in the air, that is a nuisance. And part of what we're attempting to do is to put systems in place to help reduce that impact to the neighbors. Because again, you know, property rights and development is all very important, but to many people, the only thing that they have in their life, their only peace and quiet, their only place of refuge, is their home. And to force them to have to endure some of the things that have gone on in this county that were permissible is part of why we're at this point. And then finally, finishing up with the water test thing. We're all, we're aware that water moves through the soil. We're aware that water, you know, can get in an aquifer and get in a water table, and you don't know where it comes from. But the reality, the overwhelming concern that Currituck County residents had from the get-go was on water because I would suggest to you, the vast majority of the folks that live in this county are on well. I may be wrong, but at least a lot of them are. And the potential impact to their underwater was a significant concern. And the potential impact to their underwater was a significant concern. I appreciate the fact that First Solar and Cypress Creek are ethical, and they're wonderful solar developers, and I'm willing to give you the benefit of the doubt. But this ordinance has to address not just you, but whoever comes down the road next. And so, if we don't put the systems in place that raise the alarm, that raise the alert level in the county, to be able to address a potentially toxic solution, then shame on us. And I know it's inconvenient, I know it's an additional cost, but it provides the degree of peace that the neighbors are really asking for, the residents of the county.
Well, I agree with a lot of things that my fellow commissioners said. And if we don't do anything, there won't be solar. So, we are working, we're trying to protect the citizens as well as the county. This is not something we did overnight. We have worked several, several months on this. It's not something that we just decided, oh, what can we do? This has, there's been a lot of thought put into this, there's been a lot of give and take on both sides. One of the main reasons that we felt like we had to make sure we covered all the bases is because a lot of the solar companies that are here in the county, we've had problems with them. They've had violations lodged against them, and you just don't know. When you're sitting there and the grass is growing, and people are calling the county and complaining, we want to make sure we try to protect the citizens here in the county and it don't look so bad. And this, as our county attorneys always told us, it's a working document. We can make changes if we see something isn't working, or if we see we were too restricted on it, we can certainly come back and change it. So, it is a working document. And I can assure you, this is, everything that we've done, all the hours that we put into it, has been to protect the farmer who wants to rent or sell his property to a solar company, because there's been a lot of things about solar panels that we've learned, there's been a lot of things about some of the herbicides that they've used. So, everything we've done, we've done to try to help the county. That's all I have.
Okay, a few things. First of all, I just want to, we've got some newer board members that weren't at some of the work sessions, and I just wanted to express what I expressed during those work sessions. The biggest concern I had with constituents at the lower end of the county, one of them was the drinking water, because I'm on a well water, drinking water, a lot of individuals were, so they wanted to make sure we were going to test the wells, which I think we've addressed it, I think we've backed off a little bit that, on the well testing. But I think that would ease a lot of the constituents' concerns about the well. And my other issue was just the site of them, making sure that we had the proper buffers in place and the proper foliage in place. And the other thing I expressed is, is as far as the size, and I said this in the meeting, as far as the size is concerned, if it's not in the main corridor, if it's out off the beaten path, I really didn't care how big the daggone thing was. You know, if you've got three neighborhoods, or three farmers, or three individuals in the same area, and they want to come together and build something, and another one's going to be seeing it, so what? That's fine, let them do it. I didn't, and I expressed it, I didn't have a concern with it. I don't think we should. Like that, I did express that concern to everybody in that meeting, that, you know, if you've got individuals that want to build a, you know, solar farm, and it's covered and it's away from the main corridor, again, I didn't care on the size, and I still don't care on the size of it. I do respect some of the comments I heard out there, especially with the generations that have lived in this county. I respect their comments and their thoughts on this. I've also talked to landowners that have told me, says Mike, "I've had this land for a long time, I planned on using it in the future to supplement some income for either kids in school, or family issues, or my retirement. How come you're going to restrict me now from what I had planned for doing it?" And that bothered me, and to an extent, I agree with them on that. You know, how, land rights, we should allow them, to an extent, to have some decisions of what they want to do with the land. Yes, we've had some experiences with the First Solar issues, and I've learned a lot in the years I've been in the commission here with solar, come a long ways. We've learned a lot. I think the board has learned a lot with solar panels, maintenance, construction. I think we started working on the addressing some of those concerns. But, you know, and my daughter, when they were living in the house, I mean, they had construction going on, they said, "Mike," or Dad, you know, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock in the morning, the hammer guns are going, you know, so, and we can't stop because they're allowed to do it. I mean, so you're going to have some construction noise, and I do agree, near schools with the pounding, the power drive, we need to make sure we address that properly. But as far as construction goes, I mean, builders do it all weekend. And that was just my little bit of a comment I wanted to put out there.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'll offer up my two cents. Well, as far as residential building goes, a couple nail guns running is nowhere near as incessant as piling, so me personally, I would want the refuge of being able to have some downtime at home and enjoy my home and my backyard, not listening to the construction noise over the years. So, that was, again, one of the factors in putting in some of the noise standards that we had in the ordinance. As they've all stated, we worked, we had five different meetings on this, countless phone calls, I don't know how many hours the planning staff put into it, but they do, we do owe them a thank you for their patience in working with us, the multiple revisions. And I would like to remind everyone again that this is a living document. I fully expect that it can and will be changed in the future, no matter what comes out of this evening. I think that's about all I had. I'm living in Corolla, I'm really just looking at the rest of the board for the mainland experience more so, I'm not going to see them in my neck of the woods, so. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right. To the left of Mr. White, the three of us, we weren't on the board at the time. As stated, and I asked Lori that question, it's 23 months, and I get it, there's a lot that goes into this. The individual from Elizabeth City, Mr. Jarvis, I believe was his last name, stated that Sun Energy and Ecoplexus, the two solar farms that we have, spent $316,000 in taxes in 2018. Farmer would have paid $16,000, 15-8, so that's a $300,000 return. 100% of the people in this room said yes. 100% of the people in this room said they wanted solar. 100% of the people in this room called my phone, too, and I talked to them. So, which is not a problem, that's my job. I work for the people. I'll say it again, I've never went to a 911 call as a sergeant at the Sheriff's Department, a detective, or a road deputy, or a civil process officer for a solar panel. They've never called 911 to my knowledge. They don't need a desk at any school, elementary, middle school, high school, just some of the names that spoke in this room, and I've lived here for 30, right at 35 years, Newburns, Wrights, Griggs, Etheridge's, Flora's, Fairby's, Roberts, Jarvis, just naming a few, and just in this room alone that came up and spoke, and if I forgot somebody's name, no disrespect. Those are names that have been in this county longer than I've been here, longer than anybody that's on this board's been here, reception maybe of a couple. Sun Energy, they rented 19 homes in this county while they did production. I did my homework on this stuff, I've got a lot of hours in this. They had 40 to 65 people every day eating lunch at Southland, they were eating breakfast at Southland, they were buying groceries at Foodline, they were buying cigarettes, drinks, ice. The money that they spent at Coastal Ready Mix alone, and other places for the crush-and-run and the crush materials in this county, it's ridiculous how much money that they've spent. And Mr. Beaumont brought it up, they were not a good neighbor. And I went to there in my other role as a deputy, and I shut that down. They weren't abiding by the ordinance rules, if they don't abide by the ordinance rules, and a couple of the companies are in here, and, you know, I'm not throwing out threats or nothing, but, you know, I mean, the county's going to find you. I mean, there's rules, and, you know, whatever we come up with, I hope you guys will be a better neighbor, and, you know, you seem very respectful when I've talked to you. Farmers spray chemicals, farmers spray Roundup, farmers spray pesticides, herbicide, restricted-use chemicals. You know, what's the difference of there not being some Roundup sprayed by some guy? And I don't cut grass at any of them for my company, so I'm not saying that for me, but I'm just saying that I know a couple of the guys that maintain some of the solar farms, and I know the money that they spend on having a weed eat around all those solar panels, which I think is stupid, because it's not for cosmetics. I'm going to make a motion when everybody's done, and some of it is towards what these guys, prior to us three being here, had came up with, and some of it is towards the planning board, it's just kind of a middle base. But like I said, I'm trying to think of this, I mean, like, even though the solar companies in the past, they donated to the schools, they donated money to the sports programs, kids first, numerous things, they spent a lot of money in this county. One thing is, Mr. Beaumont said, when they drive those pilot, they are loud, they are really loud, but so is Blackwater Academy, or, you know, whatever it's called right now. But, you know, I mean, like I said, there's different things, and I do agree, there needs to be some hours set. The noise ordinance in the county, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., nobody needs to be banging pylons at 9:00 p.m. If you've got a seven-year-old kid that's a half a mile from it, he's going to hear it. So, that's something in my motion, but, I mean, that's just all I wanted to say. But like I said, I know they've worked on this for a long time, I know the planning board worked on it, I know we've talked to all you guys, but if somebody was so against it, I didn't see not one of them in this audience tonight. That's it.
Mr. Etheridge?
Last year, well, I'll go back in history a little bit. One of the things that I see, Paul O'Neill still sitting here, when he and I came on the board, we were determined to try to make Currituck County progressive in terms of attractive to industry, and looking for innovative sources to expand our tax base. Last year, when I was running for election, I heard over and over again, "Why is it so hard for a business to locate in the Currituck County? Why do we make things so difficult?" And, you know, if we want to hold ourselves out as an innovative, progressive county, we have to look at these new technologies, and renewable energy is one of them. Our proximity to the Port of Norfolk gives us the opportunity that we could locate possibly some type of renewable energy industry here that can manufacture various components and then export them. One of the things we keep hearing is our balance of trade deficit. And here we are, sitting here, closest to the Port of Norfolk other than Suffolk, and they're always looking for where they can expand their distribution network, because they run out of space up there as stuff comes into the port. So, we want to be a county that our grandchildren and our legacy to our grandchildren and children is such that they did well for the people of Currituck County. We need to diversify our tax base, and I haven't seen anybody else knocking on the door, offering to make a tax contribution like the two solar facilities we have today's making. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Jarvis, we put you out there.
Well, I know I've spoken to a lot of you out in the audience, and I've talked to most of the commissioners about this. I've been on the job six days, and it's a daunting thing. I see both sides. I grew up on a farm, adjacent to our family farm is a solar farm. We've had no issues with it, they've been good neighbors to my family farm. I understand the concerns, I think the solar farm in Shawboro is an eyesore, and we don't want that in our county. I think we want to prevent that from happening again. I do think it's, the Board of Commissioners' draft language is strict. I understand why it is, and I understand that they've worked two years before I got here, including Bobby Hannig, whose seat I took, worked to come up with this draft language. And so, it makes me reluctant to come here and try to undo anything that he did. But I do understand both sides, and I would be willing to listen to any amendments that you have to offer. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Paulson, your court, sir?
All right, this is going to be a long motion, but, all right, forest-to-the-wind facilities, there's 13 topics, and I'm going to go, I'm not going to read both of them, I'm going to go with kind of my recommendation. Like I said, I have numerous hours of working on this, and I don't know if I'm going to be right or wrong, or whatever on the thing. As far as the wind, number one, just leave it out. I go with what we said for the Board of Commissioners, no wind facilities at this time. That's a completely different animal than a solar panel, a wind farm. The second part of the properties per project, it's that person's land, and if they want to abut with another project, you know, I mean, who am I? Who am I? I work for the people, like I said. I'm going to say no, no limit on abutting properties per project, and nothing on the internal setbacks, because if it's a joint project between them. The next one, maximum size limitation, I'm going to say no size limitation. And that changed from what I felt earlier today. As far as the setbacks, I do agree with the Board of Commissioners' version on this, and I say we leave it at the 300-foot setback as it's written, and the 150 on the internal and the property lines, as well as the 100 with the, with CAMA, and any bodies of waters, wetlands, and natural heritage areas, we shouldn't be, you know, on top of those. The maximum height is 15 foot, is what the Board of Commissioners come up with, and I know a couple of the solar companies requested the 20 with the rotating, it's 5 foot. I don't have a problem with, I'm going to go with the planning board on the 20 foot on that one. I modify the hours of operation, 7 to 7, Monday through Saturday, Sunday's your day off, and the county ordinance, far as the quiet time, stops at 9:00, but 7 to 7, Monday through Saturday. If you can't do it in 72 hours in a week, so be it. The buffers, this one, I want to kind of do a combination. The main thing, far as like, the Type D buffer, and I agree for the, there's so much to this, I'm sorry. I'm going to go with the planning board on this one, and just leave it at that, on the buffer that Lori had discussed. Street access, I agree with the Board of Commissioners, you know, they need approval. I do want to add one thing on there, they need approval from any agencies, forests have to go over railroads, anything with NC DOT, and that needs, you know, prior to, all those need to be in a row before they get their, I guess, conditional use permit. The percentages of the, I agree with the 30% of the total projected area with the Board of Commissioners. The herbicides, farmers spray stuff compared to a landscape guy or somebody, I don't have a problem with it. So, the herbicides can be used. The monitoring wells, this is a touchy one, and this, when I got any negative kickback on that, I want to kind of combo this one a little bit. The depth, I want to go with what the planning board said of 20 foot. Far as the wells required, they said one in the center, and an additional, at least an additional 2 foot, and this may be something, with an additional two more wells, either on the north or south of the property, basically the lowest part of the property, or east or west, whichever that would fall in. Yeah, the lowest point. And the, far as, and the testing, the same thing to, you know, because that is an issue with the North Carolina Drinking Water Act, that part. And I tested every, every two years, or, yeah, tested every two years, and then if they're found clean, I guess after, we'll say the first two tests, test them every five years, prior to the decommissioning. The decommissioning plan updated, like the planning board's version, every five The decommissioning plan updated, like the planning board's version, every five years, correction, correction, I'm sorry, every three years. I amended that one of the facility. And then the performance guarantee, the planning board on the five years update, let me go back, I forgot one thing, I'm sorry. If the property ownership changes, you know, as long as it's, when I say changes, if they sell the property, if it stays in the family name or the family, then it doesn't need to be, but the Commissioners' prior to version had, if it's sold or changes ownership, not within that family, that needs to be notified within the time or whatever. That was a lot, so.
It was a lot.
Pretty much, like I said, is a kind of a combination of both. Some going both ways. That's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Can I ask for clarification of something here?
Absolutely.
What do you say in test four?
Far as the wells be contaminated, if there's contaminant.
You said drinking water.
Yeah, the drinking water standards, yeah.
And that is listed in the ordinance.
That's in the ordinance as well.
And that's what the concerns I have with constituents is about the drinking water.
But if the panels do not contain any of those, quote, contaminants that are in the clean water, why are we testing it?
Well, we said in there that we would test and get the base, and then when a future test, you cannot go exceed anything at the tested level. So we'll have a baseline established on the test, and then after the next test, can't exceed those levels or anything to it.
And the drinking water was an easily ready identifiable test with set.
But we would test it and then get a base of what's already there.
So are we going to hold the current landowner hostage for chemicals that are in the ground?
No. We said we will, if I must, we will make a, we'll make a test, we'll drill the well, we'll take a sample, and whatever that sample comes back at, that's what we're going to hold the solar companies for, for any future tests, that it doesn't go above that base for the construction project.
And if that well failed, you know, so forth, which it happens in the county for some.
It would be the homeowner, it wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be the solar panel's problem, but if it failed, I mean, you know, then I guess we'd have to take out the land.
I'm not even sure that would be a landowner issue. I mean, if you drill a well, if you drill a well and it fails, you go drill somewhere else till you find good water. I mean, we don't, and part of that was to protect the solar companies. So if something showed up and it was, it was already there, they didn't have any responsibility from that point forward.
We have documents saying that.
We want to have a baseline.
Yeah.
Make sure it didn't get anywhere.
Correct. That's all we were trying to do with that, Commissioner Etheridge, was just give it some people some assurances.
That's why I asked a question. If the panel doesn't have any of those contaminants in it, what are you testing for?
If something ever happened in the future, runoff, over pesticides, it could be anything. I mean, if the copper starts eroding or something, I mean, again, the constituents I talked to in the South End, they wanted some assurance on the drinking water. And I said, look, if we test it now and have a base document, and then we test later, if it's the same, then that's the way it was. And if something comes up, we can see what comes up, and then we can go back to see if it is coming from the solar panels, and it may not be, it may be something else, or maybe it leakages from another property, who knows? But at least it gives us something to start investigating to find out what's.
There's also significant discussion about chemicals that, some that are being used during the manufacturing of the panels, and I'm fond to, you know, bring up the analogy to asbestos, and that sounded great when it first came out. And there may be toxic substances that are used during the manufacturing or the production of these that we're not even aware of yet, so we want a vehicle in place to be able to ensure that the Currituck County residents are being protected from water contamination.
Because there are a lot of different manufacturers still out there, and some older panels and not, so.
Can we ask this to the solar guys? I know we're, this is, I mean, are y'all, are they primarily using the cadmium ones, the, I mean, that's pretty much.
It depends, it varies. It doesn't matter. It varies. You don't know who's coming in.
Yeah.
He might be the manufacturer of the panel.
Well, that's, and that's why I did the water part.
Yeah, so that was something we looked at, if it's Chinese-made panel, you know, their manufacturing standards are not near what ours are, and at least one of them here today uses homegrown stuff, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to encourage Commissioner McCord also to make sure that he includes a statement of consistency and reasonableness in his motion.
This is the first motion since I've been back. This is, and this is my motion, far as consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan policies, including AG1 and ED1, reasonable and in public interest best, it prevents incompatible solar array projects from being established that could adversely impact the quality of life for county residents. It's been a while.
Okay. Thanks for keeping us straight, Ike.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? What was the count?
Four, three.
Four, three, four in favor? Did you vote yes or no?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I need to know who voted.
Okay, who voted, who voted a yes?
Kind of count out.
All right, that's that. Next item on the agenda, board appointments. Approval of the Board of Commissioners' appointments to local advisory slash regional boards. Mr. Chairman, you skipped New Business A.
Consideration of horse.
Thank you. Jumping back, New Business A, consideration of an ordinance, so the Currituck County Board of Commissioners amending section 10-64 of the Code of Ordinances, regulate and parking on the county's beaches.
Mr. Chairman, this comes to the board following the experience this past summer with the beach parking permits and following a group of citizens who met with county staff also to talk about how the beach parking permit program worked during the last season and what modifications might be beneficial to make the program better and easier to administer in the coming year. So with that, I'll refer you to the proposed ordinance amendment on page two, line 15. This is actually, this language in paragraph, subparagraph D is actually from the previous ordinance, as it had been written for some time, and relates essentially to the annual permits for operation of a moped, motorcycle, or off-road vehicle. But the only change to make it consistent with the rest of some changes that are made in this ordinance is that county residents may obtain for no fee two annual permits. That's just some cleanup of language. Now, what is related to the beach parking permit and the modifications proposed in this ordinance now is on page two, line 20, well, beginning line 26 with subparagraph E. This was a portion of the ordinance that formerly would allow for someone to receive two parking permits for each motor vehicle that was owned, leased, or assigned to them. And the modification now will be, we're no longer going to tie the beach parking permit to a motor vehicle itself, but rather for county residents and non-resident property owners, they will be eligible to receive for no fee two beach parking permits assigned to the address where they live in the county or the physical address of property owned by the non-resident property owner within the county. The next change going on down, on to page three, is a modification of the provision that allowed for county residents residing north of the North Beach Access Ramp to obtain two additional parking permits not issued to a motor vehicle. That would now be changed or modified to provide that persons who own a dwelling located north of the North Beach Access Ramp may obtain for no fee two additional parking permits assigned to the physical address of their dwelling. Moving on down, then, to line 17, subparagraph H would be stricken. That paragraph allowed for persons who own property located north of the North Beach Access Ramp that was in a rental program to obtain two parking permits at no fee. And so with the other changes, it was a recommendation of the citizens' group, staff, and the board at your work session discussing this issue, to now strike that out entirely, given modifications made for those persons with a dwelling located north of the North Beach Access Ramp. So those are the modifications proposed for the beach driving permit ordinance, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the board? Okay. Would you like to make a motion on this? You already got yours? All right. Well, I'll move to approve. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. It's getting to be a long night. All right, now we'll move on to board appointments. Thank you, Mr. Scanlon, for straightening me out. Approval of Board of Commissioner appointments to local advisory slash regional boards. And any questions, comments, concerns about the various boards? No? All right. Do you have a motion for approval?
May I?
Second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Consent agenda. Questions, comments, or concern on the consent agenda this evening?
May I?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. At this time, we have the county manager's report.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. We'll recess the regular Board of Commissioners' meeting and open a special meeting in the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District for some budget amendments. Do we need to discuss anything on that this evening?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. You have two budget amendments tonight for your consideration, sitting as the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer Board. One is, we've had some additional regulatory letters that we have been sending out to that district, so we're asking to move money around internally to cover the additional postage for that. And we're also, the second one, moving some money around operationally as we start the process of transitioning from the current plant into the new plant this spring, a budget amendment to adjust the cost of associated with transitioning from that plant to the other. And I'll be happy to answer specific questions you might have on either one of those budget amendments.
Questions for Mr. Scanlon? Okay. I'll move to approve.
I'll go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Someone like to, motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting, too.
Well, no, we have to adjourn the, right. Special meeting of the.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the regular meeting and reconvene, you know, to as Board of Commissioners for closed session, discuss.
I'll second that.
Oh, we have to, we have to, we have to, we have to close the Ocean Sands meeting.
I thought we did that already.
No, we need to adjourn the Ocean Sands meeting.
Thought we already did that.
No, so we need a, need a motion for that.
I'll motion that we.
Would you like to second that?
I'll second the closing of it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, sir. All right, now, we'll move to closed session, reconvene the regular Board of Commissioners' meeting, go in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, section 143-318.11A3, to consult with county attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege, potential litigation, and the matters entitled RF London, Inc., et al., v. Currituck County, et al., Letendra v. Currituck County, Ayers v. Currituck County, Department of Social Services, I don't even know how to say, Shenira, et al., versus Currituck County, Popper Blains Development Trust v. Currituck County, in pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6, to discuss personnel matters. Thank you.
I guess we can hit the chest and go on?